Good evening and welcome. Tonight is October the 11th, 2021 at 6:30. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for this evening. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually by using or by Zoom and in person following social distancing guidelines. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission meeting and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This usually fixes the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at the Burnsville website. That's burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening, I would like to submit public testimony. I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail them directly to City Hall. With that, we're going to go right into the agenda. There will be no public hearings tonight, so we will not speak on those issues. And we should have all received the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any changes to the agenda, staff?
None from staff.
Any changes by commissioners? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to Commissioner Wad.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Motion made. Is there a second? Commissioner Badga. I'm sorry?
Second to motion.
And the motion has been second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No. And that passes. You should have had your packet. We had a meeting September 27th, I believe, and the minutes in that meeting were in the packet. Any changes, staff?
No changes.
Any changes, commission? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting. Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Timmerman, second. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Great. And the minutes have been approved. Our very first item on tonight's agenda, let me see if I can pull it up here, is a zoning ordinance Title 10, multiple family residential's Chapter 14 through 18, and presenting is our Economic Development Coordinator, Ms. Regina Dean. Regina, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we have Eric Swaber with WSB. He'll be going over our presentation and leading discussion on the item. Just as a refresher to the commission, at your previous meeting, you had discussion on our single-family and R1A sections of our city code. The next step is to review the multifamily, R2, R3B, which is high-density, R3D manufactured housing and multifamily special requirements. And we do have that for discussion, again, led by Eric with WSB. The next steps will be to look at our business and industrial at a future meeting, but for now, we're focusing on our multifamily residential. Just a note, after this meeting, what will happen is we'll take the single-family, R1A, and the multifamily sections to City Council at a work session to have a check-in opportunity with them to see if we're heading in a direction that aligns with their council priorities and visions. So with that, I will turn it over to Eric. Staff, myself and Sarah Madden are here to answer any questions as they may arise through the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commission. As Regina stated, I'm Eric Swaber. I'm from WSB. If you recall, I came in April and gave an overview presentation of the process. My coworker, Kim Lindquist, came and gave the R1, R2 presentation earlier in September. A couple of things to highlight before we get into this presentation. What we, part of what we discussed back in April was the Public Engagement Plan. And so we've been doing a couple of public engagement activities since we've had an online survey for residential uses. We've had two pop-up engagements at different events, including most recently at Fire Mustard Day. We will be posting a business and industrial online survey soon and are also planning a developers' open house for that business and industrial zoning. So a lot happening kind of concurrently, which will keep all this moving forward and provide you information and input as we move forward. But tonight, we're concentrating on the multifamily residential and basically following four parts to the agenda. First, we'll be highlighting observations from WSB and city staff that kind of led the red lines that are before you today, highlight some of the public comments that were received that would be related to these specific chapters, ask a couple of specific questions, looking for discussion, and then finally having some just open general discussion about anything that wasn't covered. So to begin with, some of the observations we had were first that in the R2 zoning district, there were a lot of performance standard regulations that are covered by other sections of the code, most specifically Section 7. And so we eliminated regulations that were redundant because they were covered elsewhere. That is most common for our zoning districts, so we want to be consistent. Second, we made a couple of caveats that most of the R2, particularly the duplex standards, are standards assuming that both units are on one lot. And so made sure to clarify that in the city, most existing duplexes actually have a lot line going down the middle of the duplex, so they're owned essentially by individual people. So we just wanted to clarify that that was a legal and preferred way to construct duplexes. And then the next couple of notes are all related in that the R2 lists only duplex buildings as permitted use, while the R3 has duplexes, townhomes, and licensed residential facilities. So that is why you'll see the proposals actually to combine the R2 and the R3A zoning district into the same name of R2. Then, when it came to R3B, the permitted uses were duplexes and townhomes, the same as the new R2. And in the existing zoning district, multifamily attached units were a conditional use permit. So in the R3, the new-named R3, we're moving the multifamily attached up to a permitted use. In addition, there was the term apartments as a conditional use. That is more of a discussion of ownership. I mean, apartments are typically owned by a single landlord and then individually leased where a condominium would be a building that typically they own the same individual units. We're just talking about the type of building and the type of unit. So we removed the term apartments and are being consistent with the term multifamily residential. The R3B was the only residential district that had a caveat to the building height that, or the setbacks, sorry, that if one and a half times the setback was greater than the established setback, that would be the new setback. So to be consistent, we removed that, just stayed with consistent setbacks. There's also a provision that limited the horizontal length of the building. And looking around the city, both we observed many multifamily buildings, but particularly many of the mixed-use buildings in town exceed that limit. As well, there could be some unintended consequences, particularly if you end up with kind of a C-shaped building that has that limited horizontal length, you end up with some very small, kind of unusable courtyards. We also discussed that there were other ways to address or mitigate facade length, that if there is a longer length, you could have different types of facade modifications, be it material or the plane, to help address those longer lengths. In addition, the multifamily special regulations, which we're going to try to change to regulations, talked about that a PUD would be required anytime there were more than two buildings on a site, or there were more than 10 units. So that seemed to be a very low threshold, encouraging a lot of PUDs. So removing that to allow your more typical multifamily development to exist under the zoning districts that are proposed. And then in the multifamily, or excuse me, the manufactured homes zoning district, which is currently the R3D, which we're proposing to change to R4, there's a number of interim uses that are listed within that district, and we're proposing to remove those. So other comments were received. First was through our online survey that I referred to a little earlier. That survey was mostly focused on single-family residential, but there were a couple of general comments that would convey or would carry forward here, including that trees and natural vegetation should be preserved, interest in a proximity to parks, sidewalks, and open space, and that buildings and properties be properly maintained. We also posted these red lines on the project website and received these comments, which are more, excuse me, more fully described in the memorandum attached to your staff report, as well as addressing how we address these particular comments. So to begin with, there was a comment about the minimum play space per child required for daycares. It was 50 square feet per child. The second comment was asking why we changed the multifamily, or excuse me, yes, the multifamily residential to a permitted use from the existing conditional use, and then also discussing why was their height limit removed from R3B. So particularly with the multifamily residential, as I talked about when we talked about WSB's and staff's observations, the permitted uses in the new R3 were the same permitted uses in R2 and R3A, the current R3A. So moving that forward to permitted use makes it easier for developers. There's, excuse me, the regulations listed in the currently special regulations, as well as other regulations like Section 7, that all need to be met, even if it is a permitted use. So those regulations should cover the bulk of the issues. So the next comment was why was the height limit removed from R3B? That is a part, or that's one question we're going to ask you when we want to feedback for special or specific issues. But this is consistent with, if I recall correctly, the recent removal of height restrictions from other districts, such as the business district. And then the question was who would determine if the visual relief is achieved? And again, with moving the multifamily residential to permitted use, that would be an administrative action, being a permitted use. Only if that wasn't achieved, would some sort of other action, like a variance or a planned unit development, need to be applied for? One of the other questions we got was why was there a reference to 10 units that in the special regulations that was changed to eight? That was just to be consistent with the proposed R2 language, which is townhomes up to eight units. So keeping the special regulations following with the type of regulations within the individual zoning districts. And then question of should the private drives apply also to the residential, single-family residential neighborhoods? Well, as we stated already earlier in the meeting, back in September, we reviewed the single-family zoning districts, but certainly you could add some or provide some direction there if you wish. So a couple of items that we have specifically that we want to discuss, and Chair, I guess I'd ask you, do you want me to run through them all first, and we could talk about them, or do you want me to go one at a time?
If we go one at a time, that would give us opportunity to respond and then move to the next one.
So the first one we got is, I guess, just generally asking, what are your thoughts of combining that R2 and R3A, of making a zoning district that would have both duplexes and townhomes as permitted uses?
Commissioners, is that something where you have to raise your hand or anything along those lines? Just go ahead and speak if you have questions or something you want to bring up. The floor is open.
What are other cities doing in this area? Are they combined typically?
Typically, they are. The one thing I would say is some communities have a single lots or minimum lot size per unit. Now, in Burnsville, when we combined, the R2 had a, basically a lot size per unit of 7,500 square feet, and then the R3A had a lot size of 5,000 square feet per unit. So we combined them, but we still have different regulations. We, if you have a duplex, essentially, your density would end up being less than if you chose to go with the townhome. So many communities do combine those two uses into a zoning district. Some choose to have a single measurement of units per square foot, and some choose to do similar to what the proposed red line would do.
I guess I'm curious where these districts are in Burnsville, and how many properties currently are, how many are R2 and R3A?
Yeah. Well, the R2 seems to be more scattered throughout the city. There's quite a bit, I guess I would say closest to the south side of 13, west of 35, but they're kind of behind the industrial. They're served more off of the existing county roads, but it would be that part of town. There's also a number that are east of 35 and north of 77, where the R3 are more scattered, usually adjacent to business districts, sometimes lower-intensity business districts.
And it looks like Regina is going to be pulling up the city zoning map, just to kind of give an overview. But I would say generally, we see the R2 zoning district strictly for duplexes in the city that have that zero lot line development, some quads as well, whereas the R3A is kind of a mixture. Some of them are townhome developments, some of them are small apartment buildings that have a low amounts of units in them. And then some of them, even though they're R3A, they're also duplexes with zero lot line development. So they are very similar in the built environment of what those two districts look like.
Are most of them PUDs, or are there some individual properties scattered throughout as well?
Many of them are PUDs, but generally, that is because in Burnsville, many of our subdivisions as a whole are PUDs. Although cross-hatched is a PUD in the city, so it's about half the city.
I was just going to say, it seems, it makes sense to combine the two. Oftentimes, these types of zoning areas are kind of between single-family and higher-density apartment buildings. That's where you, you know, you kind of ramp up your density. And I think, I don't have any problem combining the two.
So I just pulled up the zoning map. There aren't a lot of areas in the city that are R2. I found one pocket here off of, kind of between Burnsville Parkway and this County Road 5.
There's sun, also south of 42, near Crystal Lake.
So it's the yellow.
The yellow and then the pale orange is R3A.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, there's not a lot of R2, like you said.
So as Commissioner Wad said, very transitional areas.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. They're typically adjacent to other uses, often more intense uses. But a similar pattern to the R3, or R3A.
I think combining them, you know, meets the, kind of the mission of what we're trying to do, to simplify the code. And I think that, to me, I don't see a downside of it.
As far as lot lines are concerned, duplexes have the ability to build a zero lot line? Is that correct?
Yeah, that basically comes down to an ownership issue of, but you do find more typically in townhomes that they're essentially a condo plat to be, or a zero lot line, either one, to be individual ownership. But zoning-wise, you're regulating the building, you know, setbacks, not the tenure of the unit itself. Other regulations, like rental codes, may address those issues.
Okay.
Would combining these have any impact on existing properties?
I would say no, in that we've carried forward that those regulations, that the existing duplex regulations are staying the same, the existing townhome regulations are staying the same. So it's not as if we've changed the lot size or setbacks for these individual unit types. Regina, I don't know if you have a different opinion?
We'll receive a different color on the map.
That's what it seems like.
One color instead of two.
It'll still be covered under the regulations, their zoning requirements.
That would be for ones that are already zoned, R2 or R3A, as well as any future development. They still have those requirements for like the townhomes need the, or the duplex needs 7,500 square feet versus the townhomes 5,000. Okay.
Correct.
I don't see any negative things.
Well, the second question is related to this section of the code, but it's slightly different in that in the R2, there is not a height regulation. In the R3A, there's a height regulation of 35 feet, and we are proposing to increase that to 40 feet. But by moving it over from the R3A to the R2, duplexes will now have a height regulation. This is somewhat because of townhome designs, you know. Many three-story townhomes are essentially like a garage on the first level, and then two levels above it. And then when you come with your pitched roof, 35 feet can be difficult to maintain. So giving this to 40 doesn't really provide an opportunity to go to a four-story. Might provide a little flexibility that some of them have dormers or other type of mechanisms to have some living space up in that, you know, the rooftop, which would be the four-story. But recognizing that type of design, 40 feet gives them a little bit more flexibility to really make that three-story design.
So that would increase what townhomes can do, but then duplexes that didn't have the requirement before now would be capped at 40?
It would be, but I could not find...
They had a requirement of 35 feet before, I think.
I'm sorry?
Duplexes had a requirement before that was 35 feet, and now it's going up to, now they're allowed to go to 40.
It could have been in a different section of the code, but the...
Or duplexes were not regulated in height before.
At least in R...
At first.
In the R2 zoning district, height was not listed.
Oh.
Don't know if that was intentional. There are a number of other places in the code where height is addressed, particularly in Chapter 7. But there, in R3A, specifically said the height was 35 feet. In R2, there was not a height listed. But existing, looking at the existing R2, the existing duplexes out there, there's quite a few two-stories, there's a lot of split levels. I couldn't even find a single three-story duplex that's out there. This would provide some flexibility for anybody coming forward with a new duplex, but we would just be consistent with the townhomes then.
I'm envisioning three-story townhomes and/or duplexes in the Center Village area. I mean, I think about what they did, I don't remember the name of the area, 13 and 77 and Egan, by the bowling alley there. I know they ended up putting a lot of three-stories in.
Yeah, garage on the bottom.
Yeah. And when I think about the Center Village, I kind, just in my mind, I see those there. So I think going any less than that could be a challenge, but giving another five feet, I don't know how much more latitude that provides in building. I mean, maybe call it 50 feet. I just don't understand her, I guess, know what the height of those would actually be.
What is the, what is the benefit of having a height limit at all on any of these?
So in Center Village, I can just speak to that. So that will be zone mixed use. So that'll have a whole new... So that will be zone mixed use, uh, so that'll have a whole different, um, height limitations.
No height limit in mixed use, yes.
Yep.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I would say one of the, the benefits of having a height regulation is, um, you know, the, the setbacks are, it's not so much that the setbacks are reduced, but the yards are commonly smaller. And, uh, due to the density, you, you could have shadowing impacts. If you had two tall structures that, you know, one building is sh- shadowing another because of the, the height. So that would be the biggest one I would see. I don't think you're getting to, quite to the height where you would have, um, construction issues with the type of construction, but, uh, yeah, uh, definitely with the density that, uh, you're starting to achieve with some of the townhomes, um, particularly this time of year, you could really get some shading from, you know, depending on where the lots are and, or the units are and how they're orientated.
Do a lot of cities have s- height limits on their, on their family homes or any?
On their townhomes, I'm not sure that I'm aware of a community that does not have a height limit.
Okay.
You know, there's other communities that, uh, do not have limits on the multifamily or, um, you know, come up with a, a different way to do, uh, height, uh, bonuses, depending on, you know, proving that you're not, uh, shading your neighbor. Or sometimes there's an upper level setback, uh, which can both accomplish that and make a more of a street level, um, you know, height and then the hi- higher units are, uh, above. But I'm not aware of a townhome, a, a city that doesn't have a height requirement for townhomes.
So I did look up the R two, um, height standard and we do have an R two, a maximum thirty-foot height requirement for, um, the principal building. Of course, things like chimneys can go taller or antennas, but, um, the height's thirty.
So s- same as single family?
Correct, that's correct.
So this would boost both of them basically, give them a little bit more room to build.
For, um, combining the R two with the R three, um, yes.
You would chop it up ten feet up to forty, that would be.
Um, and as you saw from the map, it's pretty limited as far as, um, what is currently zoned R two. So if there are concerns that people are going to, um, add on taller, um, it's probably not gonna happen. Could, but, um, not too many people add, um, a second or third story, um, kind of. Maybe they'd go out to add an addition, um, a three-season porch or a deck or, um, onto the garage. But it's pretty rare to see people go, um, that high.
I mean, with that in mind, are most of the R twos already, I guess, filled up? So is there like much likelihood that people are going to rebuild and build something bigger overall? Or I mean, is this just, I mean, is that like the thought that people do that if we give them more leverage there?
That would be the thought, but, um, our, the R three district would give some flexibility. Should there be a larger single-family lot that was in appropriate location? That maybe could be subo- subdivided into a duplex or two duplexes, um, you know, uh, that, that's probably more likely. It just provides flexibility in that direction, but then it would have to comply.
Like that, is that more likely to then have an issue with, like you're saying, the height causing a shadowing effect? Since it's not generally an area that's surrounded by other townhomes and, and duplexes, sure?
I guess, well, two things, if you're subdividing a, a single-family home, you know, lot, you, you have more setbacks than you would in a larger complex of townhomes or duplexes. But again, I'm pretty comfortable with forty feet still helping to limit impacts from, from shading or shadowing. If you didn't have a height requirement, I think then you could get into more issues like that.
So existing duplexes at, or at or around thirty feet, right, that's what I'm hearing is the requirement right now?
Yep.
Can they remodel to fit, um, new parameters?
They could, if this is passed, yes.
And to me, I'm hearing that that provides more opportunity for, um, diverse types of housing and, um, different types of families that might want to take advantage of something different like that. I'm hearing the word flexibility, so that's just what I'm.
I think that's a good observation because many of the existing duplexes, you know, have maxed out one way or another. They're at their setback limit or their, um, you know, other issues that probably height is the way that many of those could expand.
I'm hearing low risk as far as combining duplexes in townhomes, doesn't, I'm not hearing.
Yeah, I, the, the couple, you know, the places that Regina was showing of, you know, I guess the risk for me would be, would somebody buy up some existing R two lots and turn them into, you know, up to eight-unit townhomes? And, uh, that's probably possible, but, but most of those R two districts now are either single-sided on road or they're a cul-de-sac with a certain amount of area that, I'm sure if the market is great enough, anybody would be interested, but it's, it's not gonna be an easy acquisition and combining those lots. So then it's new, new development.
We're, I mean, in Burnsville, we're not seeing the tear down and rebuild that you do see in some other, um, communities. Now, could that happen in time? Sure, um, it's possible, um, but how, you know, how long? I think the, the impact, um, is pretty small, however, um, throughout the city.
And I think as we discussed earlier, you know, most, it doesn't have to be, but most people are expecting duplex to be owned and townhomes to be owned, that you're, you're just providing, you know, maybe a newer, maybe a smaller unit, but still additional ownership opportunities that at least new, uh, don't exist today. Because particularly looking at where the R two, uh, zones are, many of those are, you know, nineteen-sixties, nineteen-seventies. So they're, it's not exactly like there's many new opportunities to buy, uh, new construction duplex. Comfortable if I move on to the next one?
Yeah, I think that's great, yeah.
So related to building height, uh, we are proposing to eliminate the building higher, height requirement for single-family residential. Well, to, to build on, uh, you know, some of the discussions we're having earlier, um, now this one, um, building construction probably really comes into play. Most, most apartments being built nowadays are wood frame construction and four stories is the limit for that. What you'll see sometimes in mixed uses, they'll do, they'll do a concrete level for the first level that would be commercial and then four stories of wood on top of it. So without having, uh, a requirement, um, for straight, single-family to get more than four stories, you, it has to go to a metal or a concrete construction method, which is, you know, then they're gonna wanna go much higher than that. But it's a, it's, it's not a real great likelihood. And then in addition to that, there's still other requirements like density. Even though you don't have a building heart requirement, you still have a, a compliance density and you also have a lot size per unit requirement. So, uh, while there isn't a height requirement, the density and the lot size per unit, um, you know, isn't going, it will limit things. It, it won't make a free-for-all, uh, on lots that are, would be zoned the new R three. Regina, if you have anything to add?
Uh, just to build upon, um, the sites are still gonna require parking and that takes up space and landscaping. That takes up space as well, so, um, and then we also look at other, um, constraints too beyond zoning. Sewer and water capacity, traffic capacity for the area. So that all goes into just analysis of projects that come through the process, um, and, and the market too. So there's, yeah, other factors, but.
And, and it may encourage new developers to install underground parking because if they want the height and don't, don't wanna use it up at parking, um, and while that's not a requirement, uh, a lot of residents find that attractive. So, um, by not having that height requirement, maybe it might encourage people to do, um, investments like that.
I mean, based on what you're saying, it sounds kind of redundant to have that extra rule in there right now anyways, 'cause it's, the lot size per unit, all the other requirements that you have, it's just another rule that is already taken care of by other rules, so.
I'm trying to think of, any of the projects we've seen, we've always looked at, is there enough parking available? Is the land appropriate for the number of units? I don't ever remember seeing one where it was, you know, a question about, is this four feet too tall? 'Cause all of those other things seem to get hit first.
And we're not proposing to change any of those requirements.
I- is there a current height requirement?
Uh, there was, I, I probably will open that up. I don't remember if it was forty, give me one second if you could.
Um, while Eric is looking that up, you may remember, um, some of you may remember the CAMI edition, uh, multifamily application that was reviewed last year, they received a height deviation. And, uh, in their initial, as they came in twice, in their initial application, the height deviation was primarily for the pitched roof of the building instead of the flat roof as they were trying to be compatible with the neighboring townhomes. Um, so it was, um, the height requirement itself, um, was the only deviation, whereas they were meeting some of those other lot size requirements. Um, there was a small density bump for that one, but, um, generally the development standards were covered by other aspects of this, the city code.
That was the one over off of five and highway thirteen, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
The existing height, uh, limitation for the R three B is thirty-five feet. As Sarah mentioned, that can be, because, easily bumped into particularly if you're having a pitched roof.
Yeah.
And this would be combined as a R three rather than an R three A or R three B, correct?
So the, um, there's the existing R two, R three A, R three B and R three D. So we're proposing to com- basically combine R two and R three A. So then we can basically eliminate the letter after the R three B and then change the R three D to R four. So, uh, the R three essentially will be the old R three B. It's not combining with anything.
Well, okay, yeah, that's a better way to put it, yeah, I suppose.
But yes, I, again, um, we're not proposing to, uh, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess that's getting into the next question. The only change we are proposing would be to have a consistent setback. Now, in the previous, um, or with the current height restriction of thirty-five feet, I don't know when that would've came into play, that, that thirty-five foot tall apartment building would have been one and a half, you know, at one and a half would have been larger than setbacks. That could be an argument to leave that. Some of that is to, to, the request to remove that is administrative on the staff side of, um, you know, if you're doing zoning letters or trying to do permits and, okay, the code says it's this. If, if you have the code where it says one and a half times the building height, particularly, which happens, you get zoning letters a lot when people are changing ownership and you have to look back and, figure out what the, the setback is based on the height compared to just straight what the code is. But, uh, that would be the only, I'd call performance standard or bulk standard that we're proposing to change, is to just be consistent and stick with the, the setbacks. Now, one of the other reasons why, I guess, uh, I was comfortable with that is even though we're talking about consistent standards, we have a setback if the, if the building is not adjacent to a single-family zoning. And then we have a greater setback if it's adjacent to a single-family, typically ten feet more. So there's our, even if you remove that, there's a provision in the code that, should it be located adjacent to a single-family, it still requires a greater setback and that would be maintained.
And that's for shadowing and things of that nature, correct?
And a little bit of density and, and feel, you know, but yeah, yeah, but, you know, the, the, typically, the setbacks of the principal structure when it's adjacent to residential is one and a half to two times what a, a single-family setback would be. So the, the multifamily building would be further back from the property line than the typical house would be. It's just to provide that extra buffer yard. So, uh, good discussion, I guess I'm just trying to clarify. From the discussion, I'm just, uh, hearing concurrence that this is the planning commission's, uh, opinion that these are, these are good recommendations?
I, I really think that it's a, it makes sense to eliminate that building height, especially for what would be, what is currently the R three B, what would be the R three.
It's helpful to hear your reasoning with changes too, so appreciate that.
Yeah, we really do.
Uh, so we have three other specific questions. The first one is, um, about PUDs. This is moving into what is currently referred to as the special regulations would be the, the regulations with the red lines. But, um, there's a provision that if there is more than two buildings on a lot or more than ten units in a development, that a PUD, uh, would need to be applied. And we're proposing to remove that provision. The, you know, the, all the other standards of setbacks, parking, uh, minimum, uh, lot size per unit, all those are, are the same standards. I am not sure if this was intended to be, um, a way to, uh, provide more review when a building, particularly a, a multifamily, uh, residential building became larger. And again, as, as these are set up, they're, they're kind of related that we're looking to improve the regulations on visual relief required along the facades of buildings. So, um, what happens is that visual relief regulation moves on to the administrative side, that you're creating the code, staff is implementing the code, instead of having the PUD, which would require somebody to come in with the public hearing, have the public testimony, have the planning commission provide the recommendation. So, um, while we're proposing to remove the requirement for PUDs, we are, uh, proposing the visual relief, uh, regulations to try to help mitigate some of those impacts. Now, the one thing why I kind of wrote the question why I did is I feel that on the third building or the eleventh unit seems to be a very small threshold to require a PUD. But maybe on large or very large developments, maybe, I guess, one thing to consider is, uh, maybe a provision that over a certain size, a PUD is required makes sense. It's just that the current threshold is too low. So that would be the way, I think, I would like to pose that question. But even if that's the case, um, you know, it's common to have, uh, you know, multifamily residential apartment buildings that are sixty units or more, um, there's the design review and other things that fall into play. So I guess if, if I was to provide a recommendation, if you choose to go that route, you know, it probably would be a hundred units or more. I mean, uh, it, eleven units is definitely very, very small.
Are we currently at eleven units? Are we currently at eleven units?
Um, so this is in the, uh, what is chapter fifteen, the multifamily special regulations? And uh, so it's D, currently, size of developments. All developments which contain two or more structures and/or a structure containing ten or more dwelling units shall be, uh, well, I'm sorry, not a PUD, I guess it's a conditional use permit. But, uh, we're, we're proposing to strike that, that, uh, the, it wouldn't be a conditional use permit. I apologize then for labeling a, a PUD. That is again, the apartment building, we're, we're moving, uh, forward. What we are leaving is that no, uh, townhome building be more than eight units. So, uh, if they're doing a townhome complex, they need to break them into at least eight unit buildings.
However, anything over three buildings would require?
We're proposing to strike that. That, that would be the existing language, would it be anything over? Once you hit the third building currently, you would have to come in for the CUP.
Right, and your proposal is for more than ten?
Our proposal is to eliminate that altogether.
Just completely eliminate it?
Yep.
Yeah, so if a lot is zoned for townhouses and the developer can meet all the setbacks and meet all the building requirements, they can build a townhouse there without having to come and see us, which I think makes a lot of sense. We, we do see a, a lot of stuff.
There's plenty of other regulations, particularly in this section of building design and materials, um, you know, that, and the, the other factors that, that are still come into play. Just it's a different process than, than coming forward. In all likelihood, uh, you may see it anyways in that, uh, should a subdivision be required, what often is, you know, that subdivision would still be required to come in here, but it's, it's a different review, uh, process. In my opinion, part of that requirement of the subdivision is that's when you do development agreements and you get things like park dedication. And those, those elements need that, that public review and council review. But, um, you know, if, if it was a conversion or an existing lot that works, then they just come in and request, you know, the administrative approval through, uh, the development review process.
So, I just wanna clarify, 'cause to answer the question that's on the screen, yes, PUDs are a great tool for large development. But, the question is, in R two, R three, and the future R four, can we allow administrative approval without needing a conditional use permit? For any size on that property, as long as it fits the other ordinances? I think that makes sense.
Okay, then like I said, a lot of these end up being related. But, under section G of the regulations, it's the building and design materials, we're proposing a new, not, what is the, number four, which i- i- is described to come in to play when there is a wall or facade that exceeds two hundred feet in length. So, uh, previously we described, at least on the R three B, we're removing the limitation that, uh, any horizontal facade can't be longer than three hundred feet. But in exchange, we are requiring that there be visual relief anytime a facade exceeds two hundred feet in length. Could that come into play in a townhome? Depends on kinda how they design it. If they did eight units all in a row along, basically a row house, you're, you're hitting that two hundred foot length as well. Uh, so this comes into play anytime there's a building, a multifamily building that is over two hundred feet in length. And then again, its visual relief is defined as, as varying in design of the building by incorporating design features such as windows, horizontal or vertical patterns, contrasting materials, colors, or var- uh, varying wall depths. And the, the provision here with that is, um, with the change of allowing multifamily residential as a permitted use, that is an administrative, uh, provision. And Regina, remind me, that section, that's the design review committee would need to review building materials?
Sarah, do you wanna answer that?
Uh, yeah, so that would be the development review committee, which is, um, made up of various staff across the city, building, fire engineering, planning, and then, um, other departments as needed. Um, so that would just be part of the administrative, the building permit process, is there are uh, multiple reviewers of the city who receive the notification to look at these plans and respond from their various professions. And then on larger projects, they, we have an actual recurring meeting where we talk about, uh, larger developments that may need additional uh, interpretation of the plans and the code, um, through that committee.
Yeah, the reason why I bring that up is, while it's administrative, meaning, uh, you know, we, we could still shorten the review process for the developer, it's not a one, single staff person that's doing the full review. It's a good process to get the various departments in and talk about pros and cons of, of the proposed changes. And, and so it's, uh, a still, uh, spirited review and debate, but not, um, requiring the, the full process of having a hearing in front of the planning commission and city council adoption. So, being consistent with other changes that have been made recently of planning commission and city council, set up the rules, s- staff is in charge of making sure those rules are implemented.
That's what makes a lot of this so easy for me anyway, is knowing that city staff does such a thorough review of just about anything that comes across their desk for permitting or new development. I mean, I'm not gonna throw other municipalities under the bus, but in smaller ones where people may have cabins further north, it is oftentimes one person making that decision and that can be very problematic. So, it's nice to live in a community where you know there's due diligence by city staff. Makes it easier to say, yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. I think, uh, I think principal staff probably concurs with that. Uh, so then one other change I wanted to point out is, uh, recreational facilities, uh, we did it. So, this is section J in that same, uh, regulations chapter. We added two provisions. One, uh, clarifying that the onsite recreational facilities need to be active facilities, so not just simply open space. There needs to be some sort of a, a structure or facility there. There was a number of things listed, um, with the way the market is going, particularly for the multifamily residential, rooftop amenities was added as one of the recreational features that, that could count for that. So, um, you know, yes, the question is, you know, does that accommodate, uh, the demands of, of the residents? There were many provisions in the existing language, but I think it, it helps to implement some of the comprehensive plan goals of, of providing more recreational opportunities. And particularly, in this case, um, it's particularly when the development is, uh, or I guess, uh, the provision could be met if there's a public park that is within a half mile, um, of this, of this development with the provision that as long as that half mile distance isn't broken by a collector arterial, you know, meaning that, uh, you know, if you were on one side of Highway thirteen and there's a park on the other side of Highway thirteen, you, you can't count that half mile distance if you have to cross a collector arterial to get to it.
Is there a, a density requirement for requiring active recreational facilities, or is this applied to all multi-unit residential districts? Like if you, you know, if you're building a duplex and it's more than half a mile away from a park, do you have to put in a playground or something like, and then, you know, when you get to the bigger apartment buildings, they're doing that just part of their sales process?
But, um, couple of the part, a couple of the provisions that are currently listed in there are play equipment, walking trails, gardens. So, those, those could be things that are probably more suitable to the scale of a duplex. But, you know, if they had a play structure or they had a garden associated with that, um, sometimes that's, that's nice in that, uh, even if it's individually owned duplexes, there isn't always a lot of room left over to have a garden. If there was space provided in a, in a development for more of a, you know, joint kind of small community garden or something, that, that could meet the standard. So, I think there's a list that can probably be suited for different scales of multifamily residential development.
Yep, and this has always been in there, really all, the only change we're making is calling it active rec- recreational facilities and adding rooftop amenities. Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
So, that was my list of specific issues for discussion, uh, but we also wanted to, to open up for any other general discussion that you may have. As Regina said, uh, following this, um, you know, review, uh, we packed this together and, um, I think we know, do we have time on next month's, uh, city council work session to discuss both, all the way from the R one to the R four zoning districts?
Yes, so this, um, discussion on single-family and multifamily residential zoning um, will be before the city council at their work session, um, on November ninth. And for the public, they meet at five thirty PM. Um, so we'll be, um, presenting the information to the council, um, getting feedback from the council if this aligns with their direction, vision, priorities. Um, and then eventually we'll bring it back to the planning commission, um, in ordinance format. And it will be a public hearing and then, um, eventually codified.
Yeah, we're still
We'll get to that point eventually.
Yeah, we're still discussing a little bit how to bundle those, just because there's, um, chapter seven that has a lot of special regulations in it. There's definition sections, there's other sections that sometime have to mirror. So, we're, we're looking to see, um, at the same time, we don't wanna bring forward a public hearing that is the entire ordinance, but trying to make sure that any other things, like in particular, uh, driveways, fences, things that are covered in that chapter seven. Or, should we need, I'm not sure if we would, but should we need to define things like rooftop amenities or facade lengths? That we make sure the definition sections has those covered as well.
Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Weber or the city staff? Seeing, oh, Commissioner Watt, looks like he has something.
No questions. No questions.
Right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your insight and you're going through and working through this. This is, uh, very helpful and like, like Commissioner Watt said, very helpful to explain some of the reasoning behind, behind the, um, the, uh, condensing of the districts and everything that goes beyond that. And with that, I think we move on to our next subject, which is updates, correct?
Yes, um, so, uh, for updates for your next few planning commission meetings, the October twenty-fifth planning commission meeting will be canceled. Um, so, we will not be meeting in two weeks. Uh, so your next meeting would be Monday, November eighth, um, where we will be, uh, likely doing a combination of some additional zoning code chapters related to business and industrial districts, and then the potential for a public hearing related to our normal development applications. So, another combo meeting.
Um, we do wanna ask, uh, so we have penciled in for the October twenty-fifth meeting, which will cancel, um, but a quarterly check-in with, uh, Councilmember Schultz. Um, we intended to do some quarterly check-ins if there is a topic, but then cancel, um, if there isn't anything that, uh, the commission wanted to discuss or bring up. Uh, wanted to know, uh, the commission, um, is there a topic that you want to bring up on November eighth? Any, um, anything of concern or questions? Um, if not, uh, we'll relay the message to Councilmember Schultz, uh, to not attend. Um, but if you do want her to attend, then we'll extend that invitation for November eighth. So, just let us know.
What day is their work sec- session?
The work session's on November ninth.
Commissioners, you have any opinion?
No issues here.
Based on the timing, I mean, it's a day before their work session, we could run through any of our thoughts on these issues. So, she's very clear on what the planning commission and city citizens believe, uh, is the best route on these issues that have been presented to us.
Sounds like a good plan to me, Commissioners, to remain. Yeah, i- if she wouldn't mind stepping in, that'd be great.
We will get things set up and hopefully her calendar is free to attend.
Good deal, thank you. Any updates, commissioners? There ain't none. I would take a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Braddock?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Braddock made a motion. Commissioner Watt?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Wow. Speaking's hard. Anyway, thank you for joining us. Have a great night.